So I don't really know. We have, we have. We understand we are supposed to. But we, we can find a label between that and.
Well, that's the whole reason. You got kidney problems?
As long as you did not properly.
You just might through it for the next three seconds.
You're drinking. That's what they used to drink in Upper State, New York in nineteen sixty-nine.
If it was approved by the band.
When Jan Arden and a few of them grew up on that field.
Oh, yeah, it's totally not. Hundred percent not. The chief of council.
Jan Arden.
So it's just, she's asking, does this council want to take a position in favor of things like that concert?
I was in that field and all that.
Were you at Asgard's farm?
Any initiative that would encourage citizens to get involved, to offer service, whatever.
My roommate was there at the concert.
So was I.
Were you?
Yeah.
Flipping hippies. Oh, I'm sorry, we're on, we were on the street here.
All right.
He's got it on tape.
Good.
Cut it out.
Not a chance, right?
Bashing hippies here before council meeting.
Just a little past five o'clock. Welcome to all councils. Good to see you all here. We want to thank again Kari McAlte for his presence here. Before we have the prayer, I really would like to recognize the great achievement of our basketball team taking silver at the provincial. It's really wonderful. We also had the girls that kind of had put along and very well and placed quite well in the province. So kudos to them all. And there is something else we never recognized is senior choir that took gold at the provincial and the acapella country's women chorus that took gold at the provincial also. So this town is really a wonderful place where talents are developed of all sorts. So congratulations to them all. Councilor Pivoy, if you'd like to offer a word of thanks.
Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful to thee for the blessings of living in such a bountiful and prosperous area in Alberta. We are grateful to serve as councillors and mayor to a fantastic citizenry. We ask always for thy guidance in policy making, making decisions to benefit the people of this area. A special heartfelt prayer, Father, to those families who are suffering the loss of loved ones in the, our neighbors to the north through this municipal emergency that they are going through. That thy blessings be upon them. We ask and say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Councilor Pivoy. I appreciate your concerns. Don't mind also.
Next one either has four, two of them that were divided, two others.
Okay, we have under item three additions and adoption of agenda. At this point, the only thing we have extra is really came at this very late hours could be something of interest to us possibly. But it is a request by China House to support a council.
Yeah, we probably put it on our correspondence and if there's any actual.
Maybe we'll put it on the correspondence. Okay. So let's add this letter under correspondence. Okay, under eleven C, China House letter. Okay. So having said that, we need a motion to accept the agenda, Councilor Bantry. Accept the agenda as presented with the addition. All in favor? Thank you very much. We do not have our delegation at this point, so we will carry on until our delegation come. The minutes of March tenth, two thousand fifteen council meeting are under item five and we need an adoption of those meetings, of those minutes. Counselor Pivoy, any questions regarding that?
Are we adopting those minutes or the correct minutes?
We will first of all adopt those minutes because they're not related to the same council meeting. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Carrie, under item six, business arising. Maybe what we need to do is now that you have the George Cuff report, it's a fairly lengthy report with many recommendations. I appreciate the synopsis of the to-do list from administration. As you could see, what Jeff has done is go through the body of the text and pick up all the possible policies that we could develop to improve our governance. And there are beside that at the end of the document, some definite recommendation that we could adopt also. If you saw the list that Jeff presented, that list is rated one, two, three, meaning one would be the highest priority and two medium, three, not as, as needy at this point. But the idea will be that within a year or two, we would have most of those items or all those items covered. So what will happen, they will go into the strategic planning as an additional item of governance and will be prioritized as follows. But today what we need is to adopt the report in principle. That is a very first recommendation that was made. So if somebody could make this recommendation, Councilor Barnes?
I'll make the recommendation that we adopt the other report, George Cuff, in principle.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question also.
Go ahead.
On, on the one that is on our OneDrive, did you highlight anything or have you got another? Okay, so they're not there. Okay. That's all I need to know. Because I was looking for them and didn't see them.
All in favor? Thank you. Motion, Carrie.
No, just a question about the Cuff report. Is that a public document? Can people?
It's going to be a public document and it's going to be posted, yes. Okay? Absolutely. That was one of his recommendations.
Just quickly, I'm having some problems syncing some of this information. It won't open. This, the one with our, with our.
Delegation?
Delegation coming.
All right.
It just won't open and I couldn't, I couldn't open my minutes either.
Councilor Banry?
Just for information purposes, as I went through the George Cuff report, I was very impressed with Andy Dapper's, that he covered. You know, eighty pages of, of report is, is quite a bit, but he did an excellent job as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment.
Pardon me back and forth here.
We recognize Mike's role here with.
My brother John.
Your brother John. Okay, it's good to have you both. You're going to make a presentation and we ready for you. So if you'd like to come to the podium. And there is a, a little bit of a preamble I would like to, to give to councilor and to yourself so that because it is a public meeting, I just, I want to make sure that any disclosure of location or owner of the building or lease amount be not disclosed at this meeting because it might impede further business transaction if yours doesn't go through.
Thank you, my mayor.
All right, thank you. And the same would be for, for council because of FOIP.
For that reason, do we need to go in camera for this presentation?
No, no. Thank you.
But for the discussion afterward, should we?
Not necessarily because it is not related to the, the building.
It's, it's to the power.
Okay.
Just to speak to that, my, my recommendation to the mayor was as long as you don't discuss the, the issue that we don't want to jeopardize here is the competitive advantage of the lessee or the leasor. So the amounts that they're bargaining with the third party are irrelevant to the discussion here and don't need to be public. So provided we just keep that stuff, you don't need to know and if he doesn't say, then we don't really have a FOIP issue. And we can talk about the amounts of the quote.
Yeah, that's fine.
But as far as identifying names of the tenant, the landlord or location, it, just keep it, you may know, but it doesn't need to be discussed.
Thank you. All right. So go ahead. I understand that you come here to try to establish a business in the town of Carston. And you have a business already in Waterton and you would like to potentially increase the capacity of your business in years to come. And you have two possible locations from what I understood. So go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. You may know myself, my brother John, we own a hot dog shop. And it's been, been fun, it's been exciting. And for the last five years, we're going into our sixth season in Waterton. We've seen growth and, and it's been fun as entrepreneurs to see growth. We have a few challenges coming up, namely space and capacity to meet our growing demand. And that's a good thing, but that also creates an opportunity to grow and we're looking to Pincher Creek or Carston for that growth at this time. Both communities are quite competitive and as far as the, the lease rates go, Carston is a little bit more competitive. We have a couple of requirements, namely for health, health purposes, for overall health services and then also for our equipment. And, and that's the purpose that I'm, I'm here before you today. One of the things that really made Carston, or put Carston at a disadvantage was the power transmission and how it's done here. And when we looked at the cost of installation, one of the requirements that we need for our equipment is three-phase. And the building we're looking at has a single-phase service right now. And so in order for us to be here or to be in either building and in both cases, we need to upgrade the building both here or in Pincher Creek. But again, the, the cost of installation was something that brought, was brought to our awareness and again, made our decision, which was strongly in favor of Carston, turned to Pincher Creek. And because we have history in Carston, we grew up here. It's a place that we, we were raised by many of you and many people here in the community. And we feel like this is a good place to, to again, take back and we're, we're keen to do that here. We wanted to, to request from the council consideration for installation of that power and electricity in a, in good faith gesture and a way to partner and to start this business venture. And to go specifically, the, the purpose of this is not a retail location. It's, it's to grow our capacity and allow us to create a production facility to, to, to help in, in delivering our, delivering to the demands of Waterton and then to hold in the future to have capacity to grow or to expand beyond San Elberda. So the, the goal is to see that, that this, that this facility begins and is able to, to meet capacity in, in a bigger way. With that said, in, in the meantime, one thing that we felt was a, a positive thing for the community is having a commercial kitchen that, that is under, that's underutilized and that could be used by community members. For example, if they had a, an, an interest in the farmer's markets or, you know, had some side project but don't have, but doesn't have a commercial kitchen, there's a possibility for community members then to, to rent space or to use it for a certain amount of time in the, in the undercapacity. So I know in other communities, specifically Pincher Creek actually, speaking with some of the movers and shakers in that community, they're keen to actually start a commercial kitchen for the purpose of being able to lease it or rent it out, you know, daily or hourly amount. So I know at a community level, there is, there is some value there and it is something that we would be open to making, making available to Carston as well being here. With that said, it's a pretty simple and straightforward process. We did receive a quote from the electrical department here in Carston and I, I failed to have it with me here. I imagine that it can be made available if you do have it.
We haven't, we haven't in our.
So the number there is fourteen thousand and change. And I understand there's some profit built into that with some of the material costs as well as labor. And we wanted to again petition the council to consider this request and to, you know, if there's any questions, we're here to, to, to make anything clear again. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I'm sure that council has some questions. What I can say that we, we base all our communication with businesses based on principles and we kind of follow those principles so that we are fair across the board. And that, having said that, does not mean that there's no place to, within reason. To kind of see what can be done. Okay. Councilor Banry?
Max and John, when you get finished and the proposal is good, do you own that building?
We don't. We're in a lease agreement and that would not be our benefit.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilor Green?
Max, I know in, in Pincher Creek, Forest does invest in installations, electrical hookups. Have you, have you gotten a quote from them? Because I don't know that they invest a total amount.
Right.
It probably wouldn't be free to you up there in Pincher Creek.
It is shared.
They will invest up to a certain, a certain dollar amount into a, you know, an electrical installation.
Yeah.
Do you know, do you have the, the figures on that? Do you have a quote?
I don't have the quote on that because it's not my building. But I know that it is, it is quite a bit less than this one. It's an aerial line, which I think is a difference in this case too. In Carston, it had to be entrenched in line. And so as far as the, the quote goes, I do not have that. I've requested it. I'm waiting back from Forest for that.
Yeah.
But I know that their investment program is such that they do analyze or, you know, they have some cost analysis there. And if they feel that over the course of the consumption of, over the life of that building and that installation, that they'll be able to recoup their costs, that it's usually invested on their behalf. And then, then they'll go ahead and, and just build that through consumption and, and transmission again, so.
Right. And if I understand that we thought this was, it is based on peak consumption.
Right.
A year, they kind of look at where the peak is and their rates are based on that peak. That's what was explained to us when we had thought this come here.
So on, on that basis, what specifically is, what is the amount that you're, you're looking at from us?
Well, the first request would say, would be, can we, can we have it fully waived? You know, can, is that something that is possible? I think going forward, we, we do have the opportunity to create some jobs here, which is exciting. We're going to be hiring, you know, electricians and whatnot to have everything set up. We look, we're looking to about, you know, at least a twenty thousand dollar installation here plus the, plus ongoing jobs and potentially the, the commercial kitchen in, in the community for use by community members.
Max, go ahead, I'll ask that afterwards.
Okay. What is, you're, you're two down the road. How far down the road are you looking and how many employees would this entail?
Right away, we're looking for three immediately. And I mean, as we go forward, we could see ourselves into five furthermore. I mean, realistically, I mean, we're not looking at a huge factory right now, but, you know, having five full-time jobs here in the next five years is something that we really look at.
Yes, and secondary to that question is, are you looking down the road at kind of franchising things so that you have a location to be able to manufacture your product and get it up?
Yeah. So this would be that base to be able to then expand to. We can't have a situation where, or I think we, we choose not to have a situation where future locations are required to recreate the recipes and the same part that we're doing at our, at our original location. So again, trying to create some internal structure and some support for that and then allow for further expansion after that. Exactly.
Do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Because you're going to be the lessee, the rental, I am curious to know if you have approached the owner of the building as to the improvement to his building in order for you.
We have.
To have that lease. What was, can you share with us the reaction or what transpired out of that?
You bet. And in all honesty, they are open to some, you know, some movement there. I said I would come and speak to the town specifically about cost sharing, which of course they were open to. But I think, I think they are open to involvement in that, in the investment as well of that.
All right. So if you don't mind me carrying on, on that idea, a cost sharing is probably more palatable than having to absorb the whole amount. Because as I say, we do business on a principle of fairness.
Yeah.
And we had a similar business owner who required new electrical lines, et cetera, and who incurred a very large cost and the town did not waive it. We worked with that person otherwise.
Sure, okay.
That was not waived. But having said that, the quote that you received is really on a high end, as you mentioned. There is room there for adjustment, no doubt in my mind there is. And there is something else also that I wondered if you may have considered the idea. There, there are community futures, interest-free loans that we support in this town and for which we participate in that program. And it's up to ten thousand dollars. Now, that is something that might be of interest to you or maybe to the owner so that over the period of your lease, that can be factored in somehow. Without burdening you financially as a, a new venture. So that is something that does exist and I think if you were to talk with administration or with councillor Edmonds, there is definitely potential there.
Okay.
So that's something that I think is was looking at. Councilor Pivoy?
How, if you don't mind me asking, how urgent is the decision on this? If you, if, if we need to do a little more research, look into some different things and come up with some options, what's our wiggle room? Are you looking to move in on the first of this upcoming month or?
We were, I mean, I was hoping to be here last, last council meeting actually.
Sure.
We were planning to make a decision at the beginning of this month and it's been, been pushed on long. So time is of the essence. We are getting closer to our, our summer season and that's a busy time for us. And we're hoping to get our facility established before that begins so we can get that moving and going.
Yeah. I understand that need.
Because time is so limited and I know councils like to take some time to discuss and look at options. There's a million questions that I'm sure we would all have for administration to go back and research and come back with a million options. If you could, is there, is there a number that, you know, we would have to reach to keep you here in Carston that you could think of? I mean, I understand you're asking for the whole thing, but as, as the mayor pointed out, you know, cost sharing is probably a, a more fair approach based on precedent we've set already. And is there a number at which you say, you know what, beyond six thousand dollars, you know, I'm going to venture? Is there a number like that that you can help us? Because it sounds like we're going to have to make a decision today, so we only have today's discussion to go on.
No, I understand that. We felt something that might be fair, might, might be presentable to the council, to town today would be, and again, the landowner said that they would be interested in, in that same cost sharing as well. So I think if we could present an option of, of reducing the rate to the material costs and then if the town would be willing to share the, like, split three ways. So the cost of materials split three ways between us, the landowner and the town. I think for us, we'd be really keen to go forward with that. I think the landowner would feel that that's palatable and if the town feels that that's something that, that they could accept, then I think we'd be really happy with that.
All right. So what I'm hearing is one-third, one-third, one-third.
Well, on, on the materials and then waiving the labor costs, is that what you're saying?
Right.
So the, the town would in fact be looking at about roughly eight thousand to nine thousand dollars of work team.
Okay.
And I guess.
We have, we have some discussion we can do when we discuss.
Yeah, yeah, we will discuss. We will discuss. Let's ask questions. Counselor Banry, you wanted to ask another question?
This is to administration. With our twenty-five KV upgrade, are we anywhere close to this, this area?
No. And it would still be additional if I might, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
It would still require additional infrastructure for the three-phase. So that area might be twenty-five thousand. I'd have to look, but either way, what we have is the additional transformers on the pole and the meter and the trenching is, is what that's come up to. Mr. Vow is correct in the fact that this would be an underground installation, which adds to the cost.
If I remember right though, Jeff, we need to look at the, the businesses that are right close to this because I think there is three-phase power in that area. There is three-phase.
Absolutely, yeah. If I might, it runs immediately adjacent to the property. Yeah, there's no, we're not bringing it to the property. It's there.
It's inside the building that it needs to be built.
So taking it from our, from our area into the, into the building.
And if I may as well, like I said, I, that's, I think that's where we were a little taken aback by the cost because the three-phase does run along the frontage of the property. And there is three-phase that, that goes into buildings really adjacent to this building.
Exactly.
So for us, we thought, well, it, it just seems a hard book swallow, disproportionate for the fact that it is there.
Yeah.
You know, it is what it is.
All right. One more question?
Yeah. We talked about cost sharing. The mayor mentioned the possibility of a zero-interest loan to be paid out over X number of years. And Councilor Edmonds might know what that term would be.
Three years.
So it's three?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the longest term we have on one of those loans.
Well, and I don't know that something like this would qualify for it because it's typically for the sod.
Yeah.
The outside of your building.
Beautification.
Beautification kind of.
Well.
We just need to get you a really good sign that's electric.
That's right, yeah. Three-day sign.
All right. So if there's no more questions?
Well, just the second half of that question.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Would, would you be open to the terms of a loan like that?
Would that be?
For a portion?
In lieu of?
Not like for a portion of, like say for your third. I'm just using as an example.
We would be open to that.
Or for our third? Or for both thirds?
No, you can't even agree with a one.
The third-third is a different story altogether.
All right. Okay, so essentially, yeah, essentially what you're talking about is there is wiggle room and flexibility in the negotiation. Okay. Counselor Banry?
Max, one thing that tops my mind is we have unemployment situations in Carston. With this business, what are you looking at for employment?
You bet.
New labor and stuff like that.
You bet. One of the things that we've done in Watertons, we've, we've actually had to bring people from Waterton lots of times commuting back and forth in the summer months. So one of the things that helps us and I think will help community members here is it brings jobs here rather than commuting back and forth there here. We suspect that this summer we'll need at least three immediately and we'll be making measures over the next twelve months to make them, you know, year-round positions so that we can go forward and have positions available. So, and beginning again with three and then moving forward into a bigger capacity as, as demand increases and we continue to expand.
Now, second part of my question is, you suggested that this commercial kitchen that you're developing could be used by the community.
You bet.
Under what terms and agreements do you, have you even thought about that?
You bet. I mean, it's usually a. I mean, it's usually a simple hourly or daily rental. The capacity is there, it's cleared all of the Alberta Health Services, their requirements, and so it's a commercial kitchen as far as they're concerned. And if anybody wants to sell food products, it needs to be a commercial kitchen. So insulation of commercial kitchens are quite expensive, the equipment's more expensive. And just to be able for a mom to start baking bread in her oven at home and start selling it on the street is in violation of Alberta Health Services. So again, if there's the case where mom wanted to start doing a farmer's market or wanted to start a new product, had a different idea, you know, again, to spur entrepreneurship in the area, perhaps to be able to then spin off and grow it from there. The opportunity is there to have sort of a test kitchen, experiment, or even on a long-term period to be able to use it in the under-capacity. So if, for example, this summer our capacity is four days a week because we're able to get it all done, you know, that's, we could possibly even have it available for three days out of the week. And then especially this winter as we're building the growth and we're building our demand, I can see that this winter there'd be availability for people. So again, in direct answer to your question, it could be an hourly or daily rate, possibly, you know, a weekly arrangement, something that's more regular for people that might be interested in.
I was thinking about groups like Scott Group that want to come in and develop 150 pies or something like that for sale.
That's exactly what that's there for.
John wanted to add something.
I was just going to add, we just said that, like, this summer, we're looking at about four days a week that we'll need it right now at our current demands. And so like, it would be available about two, three days a week this summer and the winter it'd be available quite a bit more.
Alright, so if...
Last question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you hoping to go retail with your product?
Yes.
So we, as you know, we have our restaurant location and that has a certain demand to it. We have a couple other products that we're developing that would be wholesale. So it'd be wholesale-retail relationship there. And that this would be a facility that would produce them. And you'll see a couple of these products coming out this summer. So we're looking, we think that there will be some opportunity for the location to be wholesale production facility for a couple other products that we're doing. As well as providing the capacity for future growth for the restaurant.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We are a very progressive council and we do support new enterprise within parameters and reasons. And we will have our discussion later on in our meeting. And by tomorrow, you should have Jeff contact you and give you a sense of where we feel we could go regarding this venture.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. And we'd like to recognize a couple of organizations. Tell us what your group is.
What do we look like?
Scouts.
Scouts.
Young men.
Young men.
Young men.
Young men?
Yes.
Perfect.
Two out of the four scouts are here.
Which area you're up from?
We're up in Six Ward.
Six Ward.
Yeah. Yeah, so one couldn't make it and one's been out of town for quite, well, a few months. So take a look, there's three of us.
Well, thank you so much. I suppose you're trying to get your citizenship badge or something of that sort?
We had Councilor Creed come visit us here two or three weeks ago and tell us a little bit about the town council and, you know, the workings and told us a little bit about his past scouting experience. And so we thought, well, I had it on the agenda earlier to come and visit council and let them see what it's all about.
Well, thank you so much and hope you stay as long as you wish.
Thank you.
Councilor Bankey?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Capps has been a friend of mine for I don't know how many years. And we offer condolences on the passing of his older brother.
Absolutely. It's unfortunate, bad time for you. Okay, we shall carry on. Councilor Bankey, here's your chance. We have the correction of the minutes of February 24, 2016. Here is a little bit of the issue. We corrected an amount that was unfortunately misprinted in the correction as being $663.71 for the electrical refund to Mr. Kimley. But it should wait $633.71. So if you could...
Well, it is, it says.
Yeah.
It says now.
That is the correct amount. The error was the printing of $663.71.
Oh, $663.
Okay, so Councilor Bankey, if you would like to do a motion to correct?
I'll make a motion to accept the corrected minutes in the part of the electrical invoicing. Let's see, motion 1529 would be the motion.
Okay, of February 24, 2015.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Hopefully this time we get it right. Okay. Alright, under policy R83, draft council remuneration policy, you can see that administration has adjusted the amount according to the new contract. And that contract is valid until the 30th of December, 31st of December 2016, at which time council will have to really review their remuneration policy and have one in place before the next election. Okay?
I have a question.
Please go ahead.
I'm not sure if it's an error or whether it's something I wasn't made aware of. The mileage...
Has dropped.
And that's the question, why has it dropped?
I'm going to tell you, we are linked to the government rate. And the government rate has dropped when the oil prices went down. And so what is reflected here is provincial policy.
Okay.
Okay? Councilor Bankey?
Does this come in line with the Mr. Cuff audit?
Yes.
He suggests?
Oh, this is tied to that at all?
Let me, let me say yes and no. Yes, in a sense that we have upgraded according to a contract. No, as to the fact that when we renegotiate our own remuneration contract, that will be done when, in a year following 2016. In that year, 2017, we will have to renegotiate that among themselves. And there are many recommendations that we'll have to really go along with that. Right now, we're tied with the contract of the employee. It's maybe time to sever that link and fly solo and do it differently. It might be wiser in order to maybe follow what the recommendation is to start to be more in line with what's going on in the rest of the province. Okay? It's a linkage that is not helping us. We need to sever that link.
Okay, I guess the question I'm asking is also on that mileage situation, is the link because of the lower oil price or is it because of the cost of the fuel now? It's gone down, I realize that. But also, costs of running a vehicle have gone up. It's not just the gasoline.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that's not my concern. I mean, I'm paying a lot more for tires than ever. And repairs are a lot more than they are. So I'm just trying to figure out why the cutback by eight cents.
I totally hear you. As I say, we're linked to the provincial rate. But Jeff can maybe speak to that a little bit.
Explain it to me because I don't understand the link.
I can't tell you the rationale for why they lowered it totally. But it's the Canada Revenue Agency rate, which is the rate that provincial representatives employ, as well any government employee, get before you're starting to receive a taxable benefit.
I see.
So it's a reimbursement before it's a benefit. And that's the rate that they've set for 2015 and that's why, or 20, yes, 15. So in 2016, we simply put as per CRA. Because that may change again in 2016, we don't know. So we've always tried to historically keep it consistent.
Maybe 48 cents next year.
Yeah, we don't know. It might go back to what it was.
We've just tried to keep it consistent with Canada Revenue's guideline on mileage reimbursement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Bankey?
Appreciate that.
This is, this is a good review of our, of our reads and stuff like that. But I'm prepared to make a motion right now that we separate council, mayor and council, from the employee association. And because it doesn't do us any good. The employee associations don't really care what's happening with council. And so we need to fly on our own, on our own wings.
Okay. If you remember, we have an increase of 25% every year for the four years of our term. That is happening and has been factored in, okay? Yes?
Agreed. My recommendation here is that because the policy as it stands, dash two, which is the current policy in place, tied you to the increase negotiated with the association, that for 2015 and 2016, you accept that as proposed. But you put that the policy expires in December 31st, 2016. Because so does the contract. And then council can move ahead with whatever rate they feel is appropriate, detached from the association at that time.
Just a clarification. Beginning just now, what you said, did you say that in the employee association contract, it states that we are tied to it?
In your policy, it states you are tied to that negotiation.
Right, but the policy was created when? I mean, it wasn't created in the recent term?
The most recent iteration was just before the last election.
Just before the last election? So at any point, I mean, it's just a policy set by council. We could change it today.
I anticipate that this will be one of the policies that's thoroughly reviewed and thoroughly overhauled far before December 31st, 2016.
Sure, sure.
Based on the Cuff recommendations, that's my feeling. But we need a policy today to compensate you today for your preference.
Yeah, so that's what we need to do.
So what you're saying is rather than disassociate, you know, as this motion might be recommending, we hold off and maybe review the entire policy? Replace the policy?
I was prepared to do it if that was required.
It seemed to be a key piece of Mr. Cuff's recommendation, that your remuneration policy and tying into all of your committee assignments and that whole model acts be thoroughly reviewed.
Yeah. Councilor Bankey?
Just want to comment that the reason that the remuneration was tied to the employee contract was that not to put council in the position of setting their own wages. However, the Cuff recommendations do propose a vehicle or a means of recommending council remuneration that doesn't, that isn't our, you know, that doesn't put us in the position of having to set our own wages. So if we can adopt that policy, then, you know, then we can sever this tie to the employee contract and have it done in an arms-length way that we're not doing it ourselves.
With that, on the other side of that, by not, by having it tied to the employees' negotiated rates, it in effect means that when we're negotiating for the town, we're negotiating for ourselves at the same time with the employees.
It's a conflict of interest.
Which doesn't seem quite right. Okay, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to adopt the policy of remuneration as presented and valid up to 31st of December, 2016. So...
Also, was it...
So Councilor Barfus, so move that we adopt the council remuneration policy dash eight, dash three, valid until 31st of December, 2016. Only favor? Oh, I'm sorry, do you want to? Do you know something? Uh, Councilor, did you have a motion on the table?
No, he didn't make a motion.
You suggested that you would...
I was prepared to make a motion. But are we going to have a review of this policy before that date?
Based on what the Cuff stuff is there?
I would say it is part of the...
Then I would suggest you put it in your motion.
Okay.
I think I would rather not have that in the motion simply because I, if we put that in the motion, we probably need to put a date to it on when we're going to start doing that.
Yeah.
I think we all know that we're reviewing that as part of the Cuff review.
Well, then when are we going to review the Cuff report?
Well, that's part of scheduling and getting it on our agenda.
Councilor Bankey, you have many good points there. You want a date, you want to see progress. What we said earlier on that Jeff had prioritized, and if you can see, that is priority number one. So it's going to go on a short term. Short term means within a year, year and a half at the latest.
I don't want it to drag out a year, year and a half.
Alright, but it's a short term.
We're a council that needs to make decisions far sooner than a year, year and a half.
I would agree, but I do think it's important to note that the Cuff stuff, we've already said, this is the priorities that we want to look at. It's at the top of the priority list.
Yeah, it is absolutely there. Uh, Jeff, is that okay? Alright, so...
I have a question again.
Go ahead.
I don't want to belabor this, but I have a tendency to want to know kind of too, when are we going to start the review on the Cuff report? I don't want to see it a year from now. I'd like to see that...
Soon. Just a flippant comment here, but how about we get our CAO looked after before we start?
Yeah. That's going to happen.
There are so many, so many policies...
But it's still a question on my mind. I don't like the, the other point. Jeff, if you could give us an idea?
I think we cannot tie his hand at this time.
No.
I would suggest that review is in progress. And what I've done and presented to you was we took an inventory of all of your council governance-related policy and bylaw and how they relate to the Cuff report. That's a work in progress. I don't have that totally done. But the process has begun. And to prioritize what needs to be done next. Next, can I tell you that means next meeting? No. But soon. I'm just as ambitious to get this going as you are.
Good, that's good enough for me.
My recommendation is though, if we adopt a remuneration policy, whether it happens in a week or a month or six months, you're settled. We know what it is till December 31st, 2016. But by then, absolutely. I would suggest that one to be reviewed by August or September of this year. That's my gut feeling on it, that we have a new draft of that. And by our, I guess my hard-line date would be the organizational meeting in October.
Exactly right, yeah.
That would be where I would feel this needs to be settled, just by the organizational meeting.
We need to review all the committee by then. We need to really review the whole.
Yeah.
Bigger picture, structure, commitment. I mean, there's so much that need to view. Right now, administration is dealing with what expenses do we have from our committees? And what does it look like, what could it look like at the worst, with a worst scenario? If we all were putting our expenses in, which we don't all do? And all that needs to be looked and taken into consideration. So it'll take a little while.
Before we vote on the, on Mr. Barfus's motion, when are we going, are we going to have a separate meeting to discuss the George Cuff review, the audit?
That is...
Because this is an open audit, this is, and that meeting should be open to the public also. So we need to...
This document is going to be online as recommended. And what we need to do as council is really take policies, priorities, and work on them. Essentially, that's what needs to be done. In one meeting, you won't be able to do all that. Administration has already identified all the policies that need to be reviewed. All that we have in place that fits in with a report that may need to be tweaked, those will be quick to fix, but there are some that need to be created. So there are various levels of in-depth work that will need to be done from administration with our input.
Well, I guess the question is similar to Councilor Bankey's. Is it, is this something that we can work at each council meeting? Take a piece here and there and then take it a bit at a time, will we be able to get it done?
The intent is...
I would feel very comfortable doing that.
The intent is for it to be, to have all those recommendations, all in place, discussed and policies in place within a year and a half.
Yep.
That's the idea.
My intent with the table at the end of that report was to prioritize, this is simply from my point of view too, by the way, I want some feedback over time. And I'll, it's a work in progress. I wanted to get the table in front of you now. But you're exactly right, Councilor Barnes. We have committee meetings where we can start to say, look, this was our first priority. So here's, we're going to work on this one today. And yep, over time, we're going to start implementing and tweaking and... And yep, over time, we're going to start implementing and tweaking and changing policies to get there. That's how I see it going forward. Could we meet individual, or have a meeting about it? Sure we could, no question. But I think our committee meetings can be where we deal with the bulk of this information.
And I think, if you don't mind, I think that's what Mr. Cuff was getting at. That we need to be more productive in our committee meetings, and these are the kind of things that we could be discussing and working on.
Especially in the CCW meeting.
Yes.
And there is set all, there is set all structure of the CCW that need to be reviewed as per recommendation. Right. So one bit at a time, not happen overnight. And we don't have our CAO yet, so let's not burden this one. Thank you. Motion on the floor, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Discussion person, Bush.
Yeah, really. Okay, but it's okay, it's good, it's good.
No one will stay on this council.
And you know, it's, thank you, Councillor Barnes. You sound a bit more like a George. Business arising, 6D, land use bylaw survey. You have the survey that, is the survey that could be sent to the people in town and to gather information. I have one question to Jeff regarding the very, very first item of the policy, which requests your address. And I honestly didn't quite feel comfortable with that.
Me neither.
And I wanted to know what was the intent for this item to be there? So if.
I can tell you what it is.
Go ahead.
There's different zones of lands around the community, so unless you know the address of what you're talking about, none of the other information have any bearing.
Oh, I totally understand that.
We could say major crossroads.
What I said to administration, could it be possible if we were dividing the town into quarters or something like that on a map? And you can pick one, two, three, four, five, yeah?
Area.
So that it is not disclosing so much private information?
I think.
But yet serve the purpose.
People feel that they're identified in their.
Exactly.
In their, even if they don't sign it, we'll know who it is and it's supposed to be confidential.
Would the council feel comfortable asking for a map to be added there so that people could say, I live in zone one, but zone one does not identify your address because it's wide enough?
That's simple.
Would that work?
I'm not tracking off the age group either.
Well, that's actually.
That's the last one that's on there.
Yeah, but the age group is kind of relevant. The age group is relevant because you will not answer the question the same way if you were 25 years old or if you were 85 years old.
My only question on that, and I haven't looked at a map, so I don't know where those arms are, is that an easy mapping thing to do as far as what zones apply to what areas a town? People know where they live. I don't know, that's, that's not what I'm getting at for the purpose of what we're looking for. For us to be looking, for somebody to look at a map, we have different areas zoned differently throughout the community.
And the big problem with a map situation is that it makes sense that you're going to divide it by streets. And then the problem is, everybody on the left side of the street is going to say, oh, I'm in zone three. People on this side of that same street are going to be in zone four, answering the same questions.
Okay, the other possibility is you put it optional, but then you lose absolutely the.
I get the problem with having an address there.
The optional becomes an issue because people that don't fill it, then you don't have any sense of where they are. So now you really don't make any sense of your study.
I think area is a better way to go.
Yeah, maybe we could leave it with administration to kind of figure it out.
Question six is, what is your opinion of the development that has occurred in Cartson over the past decade? And then you've gone down to agricultural and broke them all down. There is no comment section underneath there, and I'd like to see a comment section added to that because there are people in town that have a $200,000 house, and right next to them, they have a million-dollar home. And so their feelings on assessments and devaluation and so forth need to be brought out in this survey. If they feel that way, then we need to look at how we do business with our development.
With a mix.
Yeah. So I'd like to see a comment section underneath that.
Okay, well, that shouldn't be too difficult to have. Anything else for question, Jeff?
There is one at the end of the survey.
Yes, at the end, you have a lot area.
General comment.
Is it going to be long enough to hold all your comments?
It's a whole page for us.
You can staple on as many pages as you want.
As you say, as one who's filled out some of those that had lots of comments, I've got lots of paper I can attach.
Yes, so, okay. So do we feel comfortable with approving that, Councillor Pivoy?
On number nine, question nine, we have a situation where, and again, I'm guessing that a portion of this draft came to us from our ORSC assistance. And I'm guessing, just based on some of the questions, that the ORSC, you know, draft is encouraging infill and going more urban, which by the way, is in line with the South Saskatchewan map.
I was going to say.
So I understand that. But at the same time, you know, we, it looks like, and I mentioned this before when we were first talking about it, some of the questions are just a little bit leading. And at no point do they ask any question that says, would you like to see us go more rural? I mean, that's not even an option to even answer a question that's like that. So the only reason I bring it up. Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is because recently on the, in the municipal, what do they call the MBC? Municipal Planning Commission? Is that what the MBC is? The Municipal Planning Commission, we recently, you know, heard a proposal, and the people who lived in that area, or at least the citizen who was applying, pointed out that, you know, our current plan, our current municipal plan, development plan, might not be in line with the wishes of the people who live in that area, or with, you know, the nature of the growth of, you know, the sale of lots in the area. In other words, the theory was that we're trying to divide into smaller lots, and the ones that are selling right now are the bigger lots. And it's causing some development concerns, primarily because, to give you one example, if you buy right now a lot that's, you know, let's say a whole acre, you buy a whole acre. But on the municipal plan, down the road in the future, we're hoping to see that divided up into lots of sublots, lots of mini lots. So that's fine, you can still own the whole acre, but you can't build a house anywhere that would get cut in half by a lot line in the future. So you're actually beholden by these lot lines that don't exist on your whole acre.
Okay, I understand, I understand.
And that is a major, major problem.
I understand your concern, Jeff.
Boy.
That's an interesting one.
It is an interesting scenario. And the fact of the matter is, on the surface, I support that kind of planning. Because we've seen, and I can give you a perfect example of 11th Street West, where there's a home right smack in the middle of where the road would go. So 11th Street West can never go through because they owned a large lot, they built a home in a great spot for that lot. But now the road dead ends in their home. And so when we've done the municipal development, when we've done the area structure plans, I should say, and I know the reference you're referring to, the person that was looking for subdivision, in that case, that person was, they had, they were fully consulted as to how this was to be broken down. And you're correct, we start with the large acres and then break them down into how ultimately they will be subdivided, to make sure we don't interfere with roadways, utility, rightaways, public utility, lots, storm drainage, all that stuff. There's a lot to factor there. And I think it makes good sense. I understand in that scenario, and I know the person why it was a concern. But at the end of the day, we have, we have areas where we've seen people place the lot, their house on the larger parcel wherever they wish, and it's caused problems later. It causes problems with access to back of property, should they subdivide? It causes problems with road allowances, utility rightaways. So yes, there's a lot going on there, and there's a lot to consider there. And so I hear what you're saying about the questions, and maybe we do need to have a bit of a section on large lot. If you could maybe just, if there's some questions in that number nine that you feel are leading towards infill, maybe point them out for us, just so we know which ones we're talking, maybe we can soften them a bit.
Well, actually, number nine just had a bunch of questions in which I thought would be good to add, like question J, question K, you know, additional things that maybe did address the concerns of some of those more rural, you know, acreage-type properties. Because like I say, it's not so much that they're encouraging infill, but just the blatant, obvious lack of any, you know, reference to anything that possibly could lead to a large lot.
Councillor Pivoy, could you come up with maybe a question regarding those additional options? Could you maybe get something there?
I can maybe send a thought to administration on something that they could add. I didn't specifically write one for that one. Now, question 10 is a little more, a different scenario altogether. It says, this is the question, "To what extent do you agree that applications for home-based businesses should be evaluated based on the intensity of the business proposed?" And then it tries to define intensity, but to me, the whole question just needs to be reworded. I just don't see your average citizen understanding what we're asking, what we're trying to get at, or what we're looking for. I think the question needs some clarity, specific to what are we asking, you know?
So how would you word it?
So again, and thank you, how would I word it? I'm going to need to work on that if we're looking for wording. Number 11, number 11, should secondary suites be allowed?
Thank you.
The question of number 11 and number 12 are very connected. So I almost, I almost think we should lump question 11 altogether and just ask question So that would be my recommendation there.
Is there, in your mind, are really the same intent?
Pretty similar.
Right, no, the one says, should they be allowed, and number 12 says, which ones, if any, should be allowed? So the problem is, if they don't want any allowed as per question 11, they just need to check any of number 12, and that accomplishes.
Right, so that option's there, so I don't see any.
Okay, so.
You could add another box there.
Or you could have none or something like that.
Yeah, you could add an extra box on question 12.
Could none.
Right, and then so what I thought was, if we move question 12 up, and then we have questioned, the new question 12, because question 12 becomes.
So are you getting rid of question 11 all at once?
Correct, right. And then what I'm going to say is, we add a question right after that. So we ask them about these, and then we ask something like, and just a very basic question, you know, would you be okay with your neighbors, you know, adding or upgrading to a secondary suite? And if you get a lot of no's, then you get that consensus, oh yeah, I don't want any of my neighbors doing any secondary suites.
I don't think you should put, I think you just say, what, do you allow them or don't allow them, you know?
Yeah. Because then you lead them to.
Yeah, you start leading them into.
Because there's going to come a.
Hold on, Councillor Banbury wants to talk.
In question number nine, who is the psychologist that's going to, going to put all these questions together? Because you've got so many choices, strongly agree, somewhat agree, neither agree or disagree, somewhat disagree, strongly disagree. Why can't it be a yes or a no or a scale from one to 10?
I knew, I'm one of these guys that gets asked to do surveys a lot.
Always done that.
And they're all done that way. And the reason is, is because yes and no, most of the time, doesn't give you the information you're looking for.
I've had several surveys that I've done lately, and they're all like this too.
Well, they are, but it's.
No, but the answer is.
I'm waiting to see, I'm waiting to see some of these surveys come back.
Well, everything, things are not black and white really.
On 12, actually, in going through reading it again, I have to agree with Councillor Pivoy, there is a question right in 12, it says secondary suites are not suitable for Cartson. So if that's the case, number 11 is just a repeat of the same question.
Right, okay. All right, so Councillor Pivoy, you wanted to put a 12, and then a question 12, and then.
Well, it was pointed out that we don't need to ask that.
Okay, all right.
I just felt, you know, some people like to, you know, say, hey, I don't have a problem with secondary suites at all, except on my block.
Yeah, but nothing on our account is an issue too. Okay.
There will come a point in time, if the secondary suite thing becomes favorable, there will come a time then we're going to have to decide how big, how small, right? And so I'm just saying, we need to be aware of that. There is a, there is a strong sentiment coming forward about smaller homes. People are looking for affordable homes. And some of those homes are literally 250 square feet. They're small homes. And there's lots of them being built right now. Condos that are being built in Toronto, Vancouver.
Look at the CCAM thing.
The CCAM thing, yes, and we're going to be talking about that later. So we need to be prepared for some guidelines because what's going to happen, we can approve of all these things all we want, but it's going to be really difficult to convince the banks to lend money on those things. It's going to be great for people who can afford it, who have the money, but banks generally don't lend money on a property less than 750 square feet. 700 is usually their, is usually their bottom line. So we need to be aware of those things when these things come.
Interesting point of view, Councillor. Jeff, wanted to add something to this question?
Yeah, just for clarification, we currently allow secondary suites. We have lots of them in the community. So this is just kind of getting a feel for whether that should be expanded. Right now, we only allow so many in certain areas, so there's only a certain percentage on blocks, basically. But yeah, we certainly have regulations around size and location and access, and we have quite a bit on that already. So it is something already allowed in the land use bylaw, but there seems to be a movement nationally, frankly, for more of them. And to see them more, used more extensively.
Right.
Well, the cities are growing exponentially, they're growing. And people are, there's immigration coming, and lots of people are looking for places to live. And that's why it's a demand. It's not just a question of, is there a possibility? There is a demand going up in a big way.
Councillor Banbury?
So Jeff, you said that we now allow secondary suites in town. Is our policies and procedures and bylaws and everything up to date as far as assessment and taxes and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Yes. I can't speak to the assessment part of it, I just don't know. My assumption is, yes, it's fine, they're being dealt with appropriately now. But the second part of that is, that's the intent of the review. Does your land use bylaw reflect the needs in the community right now? I don't know the answer to that. Time will tell. So yes and maybe.
Yeah, okay, Councillor.
Our MBC has turned around one application recently that didn't fit the criteria and would have had created problems within the neighborhood if it had been approved.
Okay, well, so I'm glad there is some eyes and ears there. Okay.
I just have a couple more to complete my list as we.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. I appreciate the discussion, it's going great. Number 14, it says, "Do you feel that the size and variety of residential lots in town is appropriate moving forward?" I think it's a little bit vague. It's hard to, it's hard for a citizen to just really know, I don't know the size and variety of all the lots in town. They're just going to go on a gut feeling. I'm thinking maybe if we asked a specific question, such as, you know, would you perform more, dot, 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 small lots, large lots, multifamily lots, you know, and give them a couple of options, and then we're going to just even tell them, check all that, you know, that apply type thing. And then we can get their preference. Do they want small lots? Do they want large lots? What do they want more of? What would you like to see more of in town?
What do you call a small lot, a sitting lot?
Well, we let them decide, right? We let them decide.
I don't think you can do that.
Because a small lot can depend.
Every community has their idea of what a small lot is. In Cartson, a small lot is 55 feet. In Lethbridge, 55 feet is a large lot for to be bought, right? So in Lethbridge, a small lot, I shouldn't say small lot, a fair-sized lot in Lethbridge would be 45 feet, 40 feet, okay? A small lot would be considered, a 30-foot lot in Lethbridge, it's no problem to get a, to get a building permit on something like that. For a 30-foot lot in Cartson, you can't get it, okay? So that's why our policy has to look at, is that what we want? You know, and the question has to be a little more specific on that. Give them some size to choose from.
Well, I think what we're looking for is just to gauge their feeling. Well, I think what we're looking for is just to gauge their feeling, do they want smaller lots, do they want bigger lots, right? Because we're asking what size and variety of residential lots do they want.
Well, I can tell you from my own experience selling property, people want a fair-sized lot, they don't want the tiny lots. Very rarely, you're gonna find somebody that wants a tiny, tiny lot, they want something that they can, you know, put a garden in. So, Cardston's still a rural community.
If I may, Councillor Marvis, if what you just said is true, then our municipal development plan is not in line with the realities of what...
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that at all.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, we as a council may wanna revisit our municipal development plan, based on the realities of what lots are selling.
We just...
I know, I know.
We had an open...
And it came to the MPC, and the MPC learned, and this is what I'm telling you as a member of the MPC, the MPC learned it may need to be revisited.
But that's the reason for this survey.
But that was the reason for this survey, right? I mean, if the whole town wants larger lots, then we might need to revisit some of what we just decided.
All right, let's wait a minute.
Just gotta remember, these are working documents.
So, I'm not proposing we change anything, I'm simply, I'm simply proposing, on this survey, the wording of certain questions, there's no implication, there's nowhere here where a person who wants large lots, such as the people who come to the MPC, who are asking for larger lots, there's nowhere on this survey that they can even express that opinion.
Okay.
14, you got it.
Councillor, Councillor...
But it doesn't, it doesn't allude to that, I know it can.
Appreciate...
I've got the whole survey, and I know there's nowhere else on here, you can, that's the spot.
I think Councillor Pivoy is waiting for a long time, so he's starting to give him a chance.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, perhaps answer that, you know, the way that I can see that it might be good, you know, we talked about including a map, and if we could include, basically, the existing zoning map for Cardston, showing which lot, you know, what's your residential, what's your large lot residential, commercial, et cetera, and somewhere give a little information on what those lot sizes are, then it would help the people that were filling out the survey to see where we're at, and what, you know, what large lots are considered and what are not considered large lots. Would that be possible to add that?
It'd be a pretty big document that you'd give.
Well, no, I'm thinking, you know, the map would be one thing, the other thing would be just basically, I don't know what information, but I think it should be straightforward to say, you know, what are considered large lots and what are...
Could we not make a statement in there that our current policy says that our lot sizes are 55 by such and such, and we consider a 60 by 120 or something like that, a large lot? You know, give them a specific size, so that they got an idea.
Oh, well, the other, oh, sorry, the other thing that they could do is, is that the land use bylaw is on the, on the town website. You can, you can find the, you know, the land use bylaw, and give them a reference to the land use bylaw on the website.
That might be, that might be...
Based on the immense turnout that we had at the municipal planning open house, of which nobody showed up, I would, I would question the value of putting too much detail like that into the questionnaire, because I don't think you're gonna get any of them back if you put too much into it.
Right, and I also, in response to your desire to change the document...
No, that was not my desire, I apologize if you believed that. I'm just talking about question 14, I think it needs to be reworded, say, "Do you want Cardston to have more?", and then check, "Larger lots, smaller lots?", and that's question 14.
Okay.
Right now, question 14 doesn't make sense.
But they need to know what is a large lot and what's a small lot.
We let them...
So, if you're gonna do that, put in brackets, "See land use bylaw".
Exactly.
Okay, and...
And, "Large lot is X, small lot is X."
Okay.
Yeah.
So, are we agreeable with, are we agreeable with this kind of modification?
Oh, yeah.
Small lot, okay, fine. So, anything else regarding this question?
Before we move on, I'd like to just add to Councillor Marvis's set. If we're going to have the request, "Are you in favor of larger lots and smaller lots", put a size in there. What is considered a larger lot, what is considered a smaller lot? Because it wasn't that long ago...
In this town.
That this town built, surveyed out all these lots in that southwest corner, they've all sold, and they sold fast. Those lots were anywhere from 65 to 84 feet wide, and 120 and 130 feet deep, okay? Not one of those lots was, can you consider as a small lot?
That's right.
Not one of them. And that was the town of Cardston's priority at the time. So, if we're going to, you know, designate smaller lots and larger lots, we need to put a size.
Okay. Can administration make an auto-out?
Already done, yeah.
Thank you. All right, so, essentially, we have then, if I can recap a little bit, you have made some very good points, Councillor Pivoy, there is quite a few amendments that we can make. So, would administration bring that back with a correction for next council meeting? Would that work? Did you want, we want to approve it by, in principle, there's no need to do that?
I have one more, sorry, if we're done talking about question 14, I have one final question.
No.
Question 50, if we're reviewing the document, and sorry, I should have, I should have told you, I have modifications to seven, so far we've gone through six. So, this is the final one, question 15, so let's choose from the list, "Uses should be allowed in or near residential areas." And then, for whatever reason, and I don't blame our administration, this is a funny little horse thing, that they throw out art studios, cafes, bakeries, restaurants, there's nothing here about what really goes on in neighborhoods, such as voice lessons, you know, et cetera.
Piano lessons.
To me, this list is just really odd, and then it throws on other, I get it, it says other, and good for that. I love that they threw gas stations in there, just to shake things up, but my point is, I don't think, I don't think that's the right question, I think the question we wanna ask is, you know, maybe instead of all this, and then we do all this cute types of business... Well, "Do you support economic growth and development?", and then these three options. This is my proposal, we can change it or vote it down. Number one, sure, the more the merrier, right? Number two, maybe not next door to me, right? And number three, the further from me, the better, right? And then that gauges their interest in economic development. If everybody's like, "Sure, the more the merrier", then we as a council can take that, that's a good direction for us, we can say, "Hey, they're open to economic growth and development", and...
I don't know, is that the intent of this one?
Until I put a dry cleaner next door to your building.
Well, dry cleaner's not listed here, dry cleaner, oh, well, okay, dry cleaner is, but you know what I'm saying, there's a million that are.
Can we go back to a little bit, a little bit of reason there? I understand what you're trying to say, I remember, I had the very first version, looking at that and having a smile on my face, but what it seemed to me, maybe is not fitted for our specific town, but there are many new residential subdivisions that incorporate those type of services within their own subdivision, and create a little bit of a town within a town. So, that happens in many, many towns.
Might I suggest that actually this question probably really doesn't apply to our community?
And that is maybe, is maybe the issue, it does not really fit, maybe in that town.
Okay, just a couple of things. There needs to be probably a question regarding the allowing of home-based businesses, obviously.
I think that's, that's...
Well, I don't see this as home-based businesses at all.
No, no, it's not, these aren't.
Not these at all.
This isn't, this isn't a home-based question.
But, but the question is still a fair question, please choose from this, "Uses should be allowed in or near residential areas, home-based businesses, such as, maybe you can list some of these, like your, your piano, your dance and stuff, but I've had people say to me, coming from other areas, "How come they don't have a convenience store up there in the West End?", or, "How come they don't have a convenience store here?", you know?
Nobody wants to build one.
Well, but, but...
It's part of the mix.
Our community is probably getting big enough that it might support one in an area, I certainly don't wanna open one up, but I'm just saying that, that it might be a possibility, I mean, all over, Fort Worth County's got community stores here and there, throughout the communities, right? And, but right now, I don't know whether that's even a possibility, could it be...
With our zoning law.
Zone to have something like that in an area, Jeff?
You make the bylaw.
There you go.
And it's exactly why those questions are asked, right? Is to, is to create the appropriate bylaw for the town. If there is a whole brand-new development, they're saying, "You know what, we would like to see something like that and a possibility, if there was a incorporation to support it, well, so be it."
Yeah.
And so, we can't close the doors, we need to keep them open, even if it sounds totally complex.
Have you more questions, Councillor?
Well, so, going back to question 15, I do think it needs to be reworded, I don't think those are necessarily the options that might be best for our survey, for the intent of the information we're trying to gather, right? So, I'm thinking that if we're doing this survey, and maybe we just pass it along to administration, maybe make something a little more specific there, that, you know, things that actually come up, things that are likely to actually happen in a neighborhood, and things that, you know, we'd love to see, especially, like you say, home-based businesses, I wanna, I wanna see that the town supports that before we approve a bunch of different things, you know? And if the town doesn't want any home-based businesses, then...
But isn't that what that earlier question, home-based businesses about? So, this here isn't about home-based businesses.
No, I don't.
And as a former owner of a dry cleaning business here in town, that was in a quasi-residential commercial area, depending on how you wanted to measure it, residential places above it, those are questions that are legitimate questions, that, you know, if I'm going to open up a new dry cleaners, where do I put it? It might be in a residential area, that nobody wants it there. So, I'm not, I don't think that it's completely out of the line, I don't think anybody's running around opening up a bunch of gas stations in residential areas around here.
Of course not.
Councillor Pivoy.
I think we need to give more guidelines to our MPC, that if a developer comes to town and says, "Hey, I wanna take this block out here, I wanna develop these, this size of lots, and in that lot, I wanna include a Tim Hortons, or a Kentucky Fried Chicken, or whatever", then the MPC needs to look at that, that request, and go for it. Whatever, whatever we write into the MPC, we need to give direction to our MPC.
I think, I think the land use bylaw will also really guide where we're going. So, when we review that document, this is where our voice needs to be very clear and represent the needs of the community, because that will be possibly the document that will really move the whole town forward. So, if you don't mind us...
(inaudible) Anybody that has a lot, get that, you know, that's... (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, so, can, so, can you tell me, what do you want to see removed from that list? Maybe let's start from that, that point of view, maybe, you don't like the cafe?
Well, I guess it's, it's "in" or "near residential areas".
But it is some...
You don't wanna have a gas station "in", but you might want it there.
Somebody, somebody might.
Well, we've got it up on the highway, that's near, that's true, but, I don't think you want them in.
Well, that's the question, somebody might.
We, we can't, we can't really...
Well, I guess you just throw it out there and find out, then.
Exactly right, this is why it's assuming.
I'm okay, you gotta make it bits now.
In answer to your question, Mayor, the, you know, when you're talking about specifics, I think we as a council, and before we release this draft, we really need to look at, is there any feedback we wanna get that isn't listed here? I mean, it's great that, you know, like Councillor said, we're not gonna rubber stamp this, and to take one from the provincial playbook here, if you ask certain questions that later are gonna come up as, "Why the heck did you do this?", because things are gonna go, the changes are gonna be made in the upcoming land use bylaw, that, you know, if we don't ask the question now of the public, we're gonna have to say, "Well, because we, as councillors, felt that way." Or, we could, we could ask a question in this survey, and we could say, "Actually, an overwhelming majority of the citizens who answered the survey said, that's the direction we wanted to go." And I think that's kind of the point of this survey, is to get that user feedback, specifically gauging what direction they want us to go.
Yeah, and I think there is a category that's called "other", and there is also a whole blank page in the back to allow them to elaborate. And I think, let's, let's not lead them in any way, let's give them a chance to be open-ended and have them fill the answer.
I think the people that have specific, specific things that are really ideas...
Those who have ideas will do it.
They're gonna, would be the ones that fill out the other, they're gonna fill out the notes on the page there, you're gonna hear anything that's not on there.
And that is what we saw last time, when there was a, the business review, yeah. Okay, are we good? Can we move on? Okay, let's go on to 7A, accessible housing partnership. So, if you saw the proposal here, it is in line with the SSRP, to provide a better mix of housing in any municipalities, with a cost that is affordable to those who have the least amount of money available to them, and yet to give them a housing that is decent. The space is small, we're talking about the width of 2 CCAN, I mean, let's say 320 square feet, or something like that.
Some of the stuff I was reading in their material here, there's some of them that are as small as 220 square feet.
Yeah, but I think here, here the idea would be 320 square feet, it is to house one person, not a family, one person, and...
Or a couple.
Well, I don't even know, maybe possible.
(inaudible)
So, I am, I'm looking at it from a perspective of possibly an expression of interest, it does not mean that we are obligated to anything. It is a complex kind of issue, where the management would not be to the town, but to a third party that might be interested. It is also a question of land that would need to be donated for that purpose, and to allow people to have housing that could be available in a town where it, it is absolutely not, at this point. It would create a mix that possibly could help those who come to our town who are immigrant, could also be those who are elderly and who live on very limited pension, and who could have a rent that would definitely be affordable and allow them to live, rather than to survive. We have some of those in our town. So, at this point, the complexity of how it would be handled, et cetera, still needs to be, to be looked at. So, all what administration needs to know from this council is, are you all right with an expression of interest, and that does not obligate us to anything, except to become more cognizant of possibility?
I'll make that motion that we express interest in this proposal, and see what else they have to offer us.
Okay, thank you.
At least they would be hail-resistant.
They're strong.
I agree with Councillor Edmonds, I think this is a great initiative. I just wanna be clear as to expectations, based on what I'm seeing here, and based on how you just described it, there's a little bit of a disparity. You're talking about, you know, small unit, maybe one family. I'm reading here, this, according to the, the building shown on the lots is a small three-story, six-unit building, says it would house up to thirty people.
Right.
So that, and by the way, I'm all in favor of it.
Okay. Counselor Pivoy, what I meant, what I meant, the small unit, uh, meant for one person, so I can't build it double, so bigger for small family. But essentially, you're right, it's about a block of thirty units that we're kinda looking at, okay?
My, I, I think it's a great idea for us to look and, and get more information.
Right.
I have a really big caveat, that we're gonna run into a really big NIMBY problem with, with an issue like this. So going forward, we need to just be aware that this has some pretty significant problems.
Yes, and Counselor, I, I, I hear you. What needs to happen there is a management of those type of unit, that needs to be done on a model that does not allow it to become a small area. Essentially, let's be frank, that's what we don't want in our town.
Mayor, in Lethbridge right now, if you go on the west side to Sundance Properties, Mount Sundance Properties, those units are condos, and they are straight up. On, on, you walk in the main floor, you go up five flights, five stairs, living room, go up another four stairs, dining room and kitchen combined. Go up another eight, eight stairs, or eighteen stairs, you got three bedrooms, laundry, baths, and so forth. And that, and they're right side by side, and they're beautiful units, absolutely beautiful units.
Okay. I don't really know exactly the architectural design, but something, yes?
Well, what we're starting to identify, and we haven't completed our study with the trends of community, but from comments that I've gotten as we've gone with the surveys is that we do have a need for affordable seniors' housing in, in town. And I've also identified, just from, from other areas, that, you know, a lack of rental spaces in, in, in town, especially young couples to find rental spaces.
And, and a place like this might fit in really well to that.
So, 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 yeah, that's why I'm saying, there's some possibilities here, and, and so I'd certainly be open to the expression of interest, and, and, you know, they, we don't have to necessarily go with the configurations that they've shown, but we could certainly look at it.
Yeah. Okay, so we have motion on the floor, a little bit more discussion?
Is this a private enterprise that's coming towards, or is this just an idea?
Jeff?
Um, yes and yes. It's the Alberta Rural Development Network, is the group that's putting this forward. My understanding is, the units are built by private sector, yes, and ARDN has secured money to put up to thirty units in eligible communities.
They'll all come in, already move in?
It's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, R T M.
Okay. Counselor Edmonds?
They've been using this in Japan for a long period of time, and it's worked very well.
If you look, if you look in Amsterdam, they have built their whole university complex, and it was in a, et cetera, you should see that, it's quite impressive.
It's intriguing to me, this.
Yeah, it's quite impressive. Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Moving on, uh, we have under seven B, in your packet, a county letter of support, the grant application from the...
I'm prepared to make a motion that we support their grants.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, seven C is for Counselor Pivoy, A B S W, talking about Alberta Southwest, letter of membership request. So we have the request, so do you want to...
Sure, yeah, I can make that motion. I move that we as council support the la, the letter as proposed, oh, as proposed here, the March twenty-fourth letter.
That we join?
We join. Didn't we already say that in principle? Isn't that what they're saying here? Yeah, so I'm saying that yes, we join, and send the letter dated March twenty-fourth.
Is that all right?
I just wanted to point out, in this, with the county one as well, so I wanna make sure I don't surprise anyone, Graham and I drafted the letters beforehand, so we assume by your affirmative vote on supporting their request, supporting the letter that was attached. So I just wanna make sure that's clear. We're trying to give you the letter upfront, so you know what it was.
Yeah, that's what I understood. Okay, so all in favor? Thank you. Okay, seven D, Maxlow Electrical Installation Shop.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes?
Uh, Counselor Pivoy then is now assigned to Alberta Southwest.
That's what we decided last time, yeah.
Yeah, I suggested that at our, at our meeting.
Throw this out, Mayor. If you want to break for dinner, I can have Leonard here for the next part of this conversation.
Okay, that might be a...
That may be helpful for us.
Yeah, I think it might be quite helpful.
I'm texting him there, and he's prepared to run down.
Especially regarding the...
Can we do the, do the last two before we break?
If you so wish.
Seven E may take a bit of explanation, but it's neither here nor there, it's fine.
Okay, so if you look at seven E as a small community fund, uh, application, Jeff could talk to it. It's a, a grant that is very time-sensitive, and we need to move fairly quickly with this one. So Jeff will explain that to us.
You bet. So what happened is, we got the notice that the Small Communities Fund had been announced. It's a very short turnaround. We got the notice ten days ago, two weeks ago maybe, and it has to be in by April second. This is one of those, it's a third, third, third split, so it's federal, provincial, local. When we looked at the criteria for the grant, they have a, which I appreciate, they give you a very detailed, we score so many points for these different areas. So Hocken and I went through the areas and feel that we have three projects that would potentially qualify, but in order of priority, we feel that we should apply for Creek Bank rehabilitation as our first priority. And I'd like to explain a little bit of the, the method to our madness, if any of you have the question in the back of your mind of where you come up with the eight hundred grand for the town's third. What our thoughts are, is we haven't seen anything that would prohibit us from stacking other provincial grants. If we can be approved for up, say, up to eight hundred thousand dollars from the disaster recovery program, that potentially can be the municipal portion of the grant. So we felt that this, the river banks, the Lee Creek Bank stabilization project was scalable, that if we were only approved for one point five million, we can scale back and use five hundred thousand of the DRP, and if we, that we could scale this to fit how it may play out. So we obviously, as you know, we've applied for the resilience program, which is ninety percent of the total cost. We've applied to DRP and been approved without a dollar amount allocated yet. So with those unknowns, but the tight turnaround on the grant, we think the Creek Bank remediation is the best thing to apply for. What we can do with that as well, with the Small Communities Fund, is DRP, Disaster Recovery Program, will only fund to get the Creek Bank back to the point where it was pre-flood, which we would acknowledge is inferior in many ways, but it is what it is, that's what they fund. We can then take this money and enhance each of those areas to get them to a better position than pre-flood, but potentially use the DRP money to match. So I understand that's a little bit complicated, but the web does make sense in my mind as we, as we went through it. Our thought is essentially, we could get this money without being out anything additional and having to find the eight hundred thousand.
Okay, so Counselor Bean really wants to ask a question?
No, I'm not gonna ask a question.
Would you like to do a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to, that we support a letter for the Kansas Small Communities Fund for the Lee Creek Bank Rehabilitation Project.
So you approve the, rather the, the letter, the application?
One follow-up to that, now that I got your motion, no, just kidding. One follow-up to that was, one of the criteria that was interesting that they want to see is that the town is planning for sustainability with what, that we're planning to maintain what they're investing in. One of the things that Hocken and I are going to bring at mill rate time is to potentially take some of our capitalization policy, and not a lot, but a little bit, and put that away and reserve it every year for Creek Bank remediation.
I think in this...
And then we have a little money in the pocket next time we have a wreck. And if we have to make an emergency fix of the bridge, for example, right now, we've got a little nest egg that we can spend right now until all the paperwork's done, because that's what we're gonna run into this spring, is that we're not gonna have full approval or engineering approval till August. We've gotta do something in May in certain areas. So we are gonna be proposing, and I didn't want it part of this motion, but when we come for mill rate, we may recommend a bit of a tweak there.
I, I think you would have to support our council for that.
I was just gonna say, Jeff, because you're doing this before the fact, are you gonna need a motion for, for, from this council to, to go ahead and continue to do that?
No, we'll, we'll simply do it at mill rate time. You'll, you'll have to make a motion to approve everything as, as presented at that time, and we'll include it at that time. The other thing we're gonna look at, just so councils aware, we may extend your approval of this motion. Potentially, we could do another application for the installation of the solar farm that we're doing the study on.
Separate.
Separate to this one, and, and we don't have a dollar on that yet, but we don't have to show a whole lot of supporting documentation yet. We just have to give them a dollar estimate. So we may feel that out a bit next week and see if we should throw in another one to, to see how it plays out. I, I don't know how subscribed the grant will be, I expect it will be fully, but we may look at that. Hocken was trying to get some more information about if that would shoot us in the foot on the first one, or what those implications might be. So it also fits very well under their criteria for sustainability and, and having revenue to offset in the future. It's a really nice fit, we're just not prepared to finance our one-third.
Okay.
That, that's the thing, I don't have anything in place from this council to finance the third. So we'll, we'll see on mill.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Thank you very much, and...
I move to recess for fifteen minutes for lunch.
Okay.
I have a longer restroom break, so...
Just take a recess.
Just take a recess, there's no time.
Or reconvene when we come back.
Yeah, just take a recess.
Yeah, I was thinking you really intend us to eat.
So just, just make a motion, just make a motion with no time, just...
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recess.
That's for lunch.
All in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for your help.